Board of Commissioners meeting. Chairman O'Quinn has had some delayed flights today. He is trying to make the meeting. He'll be here as quickly as possible, so I will, I will continue the meeting in his absence. I have asked Commissioner Fendig to lead us in our invocation and Commissioner Rafalsky to lead us in the pledge. If you'd stand with me, please.
Thank you. Let's pray together. Lord, a great turmoil in Ukraine and no other way to describe it, great evil when another country invades a sovereign country. It's a dangerous sign. It's a dangerous reminder of the atrocities of World War II. We just pray that righteousness will prevail. Righteousness would see victory. Your will protect those people from harm and save that country, Lord. We thank you for this day, the blessings to be here, to serve our public and for those citizens that are here, who are taking their time to come, we just ask a special blessing upon all. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the people of others who live in this land, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right, I'll, I'll continue for just a minute. At, at this time, and we need to entertain adding an agenda item. We're gonna, we're gonna put that in just a few minutes.
All right, I move to add item 10.1 to the published consent agenda to approve the interim county manager's selection of Jason Hagan to be the assistant county manager.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Brunson, a second by Commissioner Fendig. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to add item 10.2 to the published consent agenda to adopt a resolution creating and establishing the Glen County Veterans Memorial Park Committee, approve and adopt bylaws for the Glen County Veterans Memorial Park Committee, and approve and adopt the Glen County Veterans Memorial Park Individual Memorial Policy.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Brunson, a second by Commissioner Booker. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to add item 25 to the published agenda to accept and approve the performance bond in the amount of $1,362,144. Bond number CICI 921042 from Capital Indemnity Corporation as surety and Fifty Oaks Group LLC as principal in connection with final plat application for FP 4754 for Fifty Oaks Subdivision with the required improvements to be completed within one year of March the 15th, 2022.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Brunson, a second by Commissioner Rafalsky. Any discussion on this matter? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. And any other items to the agenda tonight? I don't think so. At this point, we're going to put our proclamations in front of our public speaking period for just a moment so that we can let these young men and women first be recognized and then get home to do all the homework I'm sure you have. So, well, we're gonna next do that.
Yes, thank you. I want to read the proclamation from Glen County with Glen County Rex and Parks U-12 Girls All-Star Basketball 2022 State Champions Celebration Day. Whereas the 2022 Glen County Recreation and Parks Department 12-U All-Star Girls Basketball Team demonstrated great athleticism and determination in competing in the Georgia Recreation and Park Association's All-Star Basketball Program and as a result achieved tremendous success. And whereas this incredible team finished the GRPA All-Star Basketball Tournament with a 7-0 record, scoring a total of 372 points while allowing only 189 points to be scored by their opponents. And whereas this GRPA championship team then traveled to Augusta on March 12th, 2022 to compete against the South Carolina Recreation and Park Association's state champions and defeated that team with a 55-29 victory in Glen County's first ever border war challenge. And whereas, under the leadership and guidance of head coach Manoy Mountain and assistant coach Seglinda, yeah, Mianna, I'm sorry, Seglinda Hart, the team won its very first GRPA Class B state champion basketball championship on March 5th, 2022, and in an exciting 42-36 victory over the Murray County Parks and Recreation Department U-12 All-Star Basketball Team. And whereas, the Glen County Board of Commissioners wished to congratulate the players, coaches, and parents for their hard work and dedication in winning the state championship. And whereas, the team has brought great honor and pride, not only to themselves, but also to the Glen County Recreation Parks Department and the Glen County community. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Glen County Board of Commissioners that it hereby recognizes the 2022 Glen County basketball players for demonstrating tremendous athletic talent and the coaches for dedicating their time and enthusiasm to lead this team to the GRPA Class B state basketball championship and proclaim today, March 17th, 2022, as Glen County Basketball Championship Celebration Day in Glen County and witness, I set my hand forth on the 17th day, today, March 20, 2022. Congratulations, girls. Can you please come up for a picture?
Girls, if you would come forward and let us take a picture.
State Championship Celebration Day. Whereas the 2022 Glen County Recreation and Parks Department U-8 All-Star Boys Basketball Team demonstrated great athleticism and determination in competing in the Georgia Recreation and Park Association's All-Star Basketball Program and as a result achieved tremendous success. And whereas this incredible team finished the GRPA All-Star Basketball Tournament with a 7-0 record, scoring a total of 256 points while allowing only 161 points to be scored by their opponents. And whereas, under the leadership and guidance of head coach David Bailey and assistant coach Jonathan Roberts, the team won its first GRPA Class B state basketball championship on March 5th, 2022, with an exciting 46-27 victory over the Elbert County Parks and Recreation Department 8-U All-Star Basketball Team. And whereas, the Glen County Board of Commissioners wishes to congratulate the players, coaches, and parents for their hard work and dedication in winning the state championship. And whereas, the team has brought great honor and pride, not only to themselves, but also to the Glen County Recreation Parks Department and most importantly, the Glen County community. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Glen County Board of Commissioners that it hereby recognizes the 2022 Glen County basketball players for demonstrating tremendous athletic talent and the coaches for dedicating their time and enthusiasm to lead the team to the GRPA Class B state basketball championship and proclaim today, March 17th, 2022, as Glen County Basketball Championship Celebration Day in Glen County, witness thereof, this day, the 17th of March, 2022.
And while the chairman's coming back up, we'd like to thank you again. You guys can go ahead and dismiss. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
All right, we'll go, we'll go ahead and begin with our public comment period. Public comment periods are limited to five minutes. Signed up for a public comment period this week is Mr. Jeff Kilgore. Mr. Kilgore, if you'd like to approach the podium, please state your name for the record.
I'm Jeff Kilgore. I want to start with a little background on the current discussion regarding SEI and a roundabout at Sea Island Road and Frederica Road. There've been two previous studies of traffic, one on St. Simon's Island, both of which included the survey and counts at this intersection. The first cursory review was conducted in 2015 by a pond company at the cost of $60,000 and the next study was done by bats, concluded in the fall of 2020 at the cost of $275,000. Frankly, I thought we'd done enough traffic studies after $275,000, but this board decided to engage SEI for, I'm not sure what, but I am assuming a preliminary response to use as cover to get what is obviously a predetermined desire to justify a roundabout at the intersection. The recent $18,000 engagement objective was to analyze and arrive, arrive at two possible approaches to intersection improvement. The first option would be a traditional intersection with added turn lanes as needed at the intersection with appropriate lengths with tapering back to the existing lane configuration. The second option would be a roundabout. As I've written to you gentlemen several times, option one was never completed. And I must assume that the manner in which the work was handled was intentional, at least the SEI consultants admitted that is what they said on October the 19th. They did not do what the report said or what their engagement documents said. In the SEI presentation, Chris Maddox said that alternative one, the signalized intersection was modeled without, without any changes to what is existing now. You can find that admission at 26 minutes and 20 seconds on the video of the meeting. Indeed, Commissioners Fendig and O'Quinn questioned that fact during the course of the meeting. And table number four, which they cited from the report, clearly says that signalized intersection is what's existing now. Mr. Scott Jordan admitted that the roundabout concept was aided by adding a dedicated turn lane on the southeast quadrant to help with, to quote Mr. Jordan, queuing back to the east. So the roundabout gets the advantage of having the added lane, but the signalized gets what's there. Anyone who's analyzed this intersection has always said that there needs to be added turn lanes and the length of the turn lanes need to be increased, only it was not considered by SEI for the signalized option. Let me remind you that you intentionally withheld the SEI report prior to your October 19th meeting. I asked for it numerous times. I talked with Commissioner Fendig, Mr. Neal. I exchanged text messages with Commissioner Fendig and Commissioner Neal up to 10:30 tonight before the meeting. Mr. Fendig's quote was, "I've asked for that also." I've got the text message on my phone if you want to see them. After the meeting in the afternoon of the 19th, I received a copy of the report from Dave Austin. In the course of the meeting on the 19th, David O'Quinn was referencing tables in the report. He even remarked he had studied the report extensively. After the meeting, I asked Commissioner Fendig, "How is it possible that Commissioner O'Quinn had the report and Neil and Fendig didn't?" Commissioner Fendig's text response to me was, "Everything presented had no upfront material." I questioned, "How did O'Quinn have a copy?" Commissioner Fendig's text response was, "No, it was not made available. I feel, I had a strong conversation about it for sure." Finally, the future projections contained by the SEI reports worthless. Reason being, in the report on page three states that there assumed growth rate's 1%. Well, on October the 19th, Mr. Maddox, Mr. Jordan went on at length by how conservative they were and the growth rate they assumed was 2%. So either the report's wrong or they were wrong. In either case, what you've got's not reliable. The problem is that assumed growth rate results in the taxpayers having to fund an intersection improvement for unreasonable growth and it's likely not to be achieved and therefore wastes the taxpayer funds. The roundabout is expected to cost in excess of $10 million with all utility work included. The signalized improved intersection would be less than $2 million. Be assured, any report that you get from an engineer must be signed and must be sealed, otherwise it has no reliability at all according to their own ethical standards. Thank you very much.
Mr. Kilgore, thank you. Kilgore, I want to congratulate you. I think you've just hit the mark of 67 open record requests in the last three years. Very impressive mark. But, no, but the taxpayers of this county end up paying a lot of money in order to fill your open records request. The difference is between your open records request and what's going on here with SEI is that we are, that money is being used for surveying and identifying exactly what's at that intersection. The fact is whether you use a 1% growth rate, 2%, every house that's built north of that intersection is going to add cars to that, going through that intersection. And the fact is, we've got a problem now and this board has said we'd like to try to address that intersection, be it a roundabout, be it lane expansion. But understand that lane, understand that, oh, we, we will diligently put together something to present to everybody for their review, but that's what we're in the process of doing. So when we talk about engineer reports and you tend to hand up Mr. Buckholz's reports that Ms. Fraser paid for, go and look at his website. He's an expert witness. He's testified in over 250 legal cases in his career. He advertises that on his website. So any information that he provides is certainly skewed to the audience that paid him. So in that regard, we are trying to do the best job we can to find and solve the issue at that intersection.
Buckholz is more accurate.
Buckholz is not accurate. You will go and look, you go and look at what he says. What does, what did he say? He said specifically, "Nothing should be done at that intersection because self-driving cars will be the future. That'll make it more efficient." That's what he said in his report. So we're all to sit here and wait for self-driving cars? Well, there's a, there's an issue when you wait on self-driving cars when they all have to go through one intersection, right? There's no other way to, no other way to go.
And Jeff, Jeff, you have the privilege to come up and talk for five minutes uninterrupted without any response. I ask that you return the same courtesy to the chairman during his time if he wants to, and then afterwards, you know, we can continue this dialogue, but I just ask that...
The chairman lacked courtesy in his comments to Mr. Kilgore about the number of open record requests he has made. I think that was rude and uncalled for.
Mr. Smith, I'll take your point in consideration. You're out, you're out of order.
And so are you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, enough of this discussion. If you'd like to discuss any further, Mr. Kilgore, I'm available to discuss it with you after the meeting and will continue to discuss it with you and anyone else that wants to discuss it. But the issue is, the issue is we're looking to try to solve a problem at that intersection, regardless of it's lane expansions or roundabouts, to find the best answer for the future of St. Simons and all those that live on the north of, north of those that live at the intersection and those that live north of the intersection that have to wait 20 minutes at a time to get through that intersection. So we're trying to find, we're trying to find an answer. So I just want to let you know, in spite of the fact that you continue to ask for open records requests and whatever you seem to find is nothing there other than trying to solve a problem.
There are some problems that cannot be solved by the decisions made by this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I appreciate it. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll go ahead and begin the rest of the meeting. I know a lot of you have other, other business before the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the consent agenda for general business and personnel committee be approved at this time with, with the exception of any items a commissioner would like to pull.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item four of general business and five.
All right, any other items, commissioners?
That was item four and item five.
Item four and item five. All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve consent agenda, finance and general business with the exception of item four and five to be pulled for discussion. Do I have any, do I have a second? We have a second. Commissioner Rafalsky, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 7-0. Commissioner Booker.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if there's someone here from the hospital authority or... I cannot vote on these two items because over the last six months, I've gotten a bunch of egregious complaints from folk in the emergency room trying to receive care. Many people not receiving them or waiting there overnight, not being seen. And I just want to know if that's going to be addressed before I appoint or approve to appoint nominees for the board. I'd like to know how they plan to address that.
Commissioners, any comments, questions?
Commissioner Booker, are you suggesting that perhaps these candidates... Commissioner Booker, are you suggesting that perhaps these candidates come before us in a work session or how do you want to address that?
I think that's an excellent suggestion, Mr. Vice Chair.
All right, can we get a motion then to pull items four and five to be addressed at a work session?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, is that correct, county attorney? Are we good in that? The motion is to pull items four and five from the consent agenda and from the, and from the agenda totally to be brought before a work session with the representatives from the hospital authority. We have a motion, we have a second. We have any further discussion?
Are these time-sensitive appointments? Time-sensitive appointments?
All right. Any other discussion? All right, well, all in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. That passes 7-0. Mr. Attorney, we did everything properly on that, is that correct? As well as both consent agendas? Move on to public hearing, public hearing alcohol beverage license. Public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side and five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should be avoided being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated. Your cooperation in this process is greatly appreciated. Item 15, consider the issuance of a 2022 alcohol beverage license to Leslie McQuig, Village Creek Landing LLC, 526 South Harrington Road, St. Simons Island, Georgia. The license is to sell distilled spirits, malt beverage, and wines for consumption on premise of a special event venue. No Sunday sales permitted. Leslie McQuig licensee, occupational tax, Police Chief Batiste.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. Good evening, everyone. Board of Commissioners, Mrs. Leslie McQuig is present for Village Creek Landing and meets the requirements by the ordinance for the issuance of a license for alcohol.
Thank you, Chief. Begin the public hearing portion of this comment portion. Those that are, wish to speak in favor of this license, please come forward.
I'm Julian Smith. I live on St. Simons. I used to go to the restaurant that was there years ago, had to bring my own beer. I support this, but I wish they had also applied for Sunday sales as well. Anyway, I'm going to have a few negative things to say tonight, so I thought I would say something positive and friendly. Thank you.
Anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this? No others wishing to speak in favor, we'll close this portion of the, of the hearing out. Those that wish to speak against, anyone wishing to speak against this alcohol license? Anyone? All right, we'll close that out. Commissioners, any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll be abstaining from the vote. I do a lot of transportation contractually out to this location, and I think it's appropriate that I would abstain.
Thank you, Commissioner Fendig.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the issuance of the 2022 alcohol beverage license to Village Creek Landing LLC, 526 South Harrington Road, St. Simons Island, 31522. The license is to sell distilled spirits, malt beverages, and wines for consumption on premise of a special event venue, no Sunday sales permitted. Leslie McQuig licensee.
Second. Second. All right, I have a commo, commish, we have a, a motion by Commissioner Brunson, a second by Commissioner Rafalsky and Commissioner Tostensen. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. The motion passes 6-4 with one abstention. Congratulations, Ms. McQuig. Item number 16, public hearing. Consider the abandonment of alleys in blocks nine, 11, 13, and 15, East Beach subdivision, blocks bounded by Fifth Street, Ninth Street, Bruce Drive, and Ocean Drive. Mr. Andrews.
Good evening, Commissioners. Paul Andrews, county engineer. Thank you. Item before you is a request to abandon alleys on East Beach. This is the second round of abandments coming toward, to you. We're requested to try to abandon all those alleys that were able to be abandoned on East Beach. This item for blocks in this area, generally midway up East Beach, more specifically between Fifth and Ninth Street west of Bruce. The color chart here indicates what easements would be required for the abandonment to move forward. To provide a little more information on this, I included, this is a compilation of the comments that were received when we went out to utilities and other uses of the right-of-way. Access was, we noted that access was required in these areas. The houses there were using the alleyways to access the, the rear of their properties. The Atlanta Gaslight has a utility in this alley that will require an easement. Georgia Power has utilities in, in these alleyways, and it was pointed out that the, this alleyway also has utilities in it. That's reflected on the, on the overall compilation map. And this is the area where Joint Water and Sewer has water utilities that will require an easement. Georgia Power, just for, along this alley, west of Bruce, west in parallel to Bruce is the large Georgia Power transmission lines. Due to the size and the nature of those lines, that alley has to remain public right-of-way for those transmission lines to be able to stay there. So in the motion, that, that portion of the alleys has been removed from the motion. Move forward. Utilities are pointed out, they indicated, the utilities indicated which alleys they required easements in order to maintain the existing utilities out there. Again, the power transmission line west of Bruce requires that to be a right-of-way. So that's removed from it, and we're requesting that all the alleys retain a drainage easement over them for current and future drainage needs. Public comments were received via email. Mr. and Mrs. Miller requested that a portion of block 11 be removed from this item. They have a, I put in an alternative motion to respect that if you, if you choose. They, they haven't access to the rear of their property, and they would prefer that that not be abandoned, that it remain as public right-of-way. And this is a request that utility easement in block nine be included, and that was included. The Lippmans had sent, sent an email, it was forwarded to y'all, commenting on the need of this item, appeared to be mostly comment, but it did have some, some points that they wanted to make, bring forward. Then some informational emails that were addressed. Telephone messages were received. Prepared here is a possible motion based on the, what, what is the original request and an alternative motion that removes that section that the, the Millers had requested that, that be removed from this. That's the alley behind these three lots, behind and adjacent to these three parcels. Are there any questions? I'm happy to...
Questions, commissioners, comments before we open up for comment, public comment?
I guess if you can put back up the easement that the Lippmans are referring to about their access, they're using coming in.
Is it Miller?
That is. Yes, sir. That is, that is this section. They requested they have a driveway running along this, this part of the alley and asked that that be removed.
Is there a garage in the backyard?
I believe so, yes, sir.
And that's currently unopened in that area or opened?
It's, they currently use it for access. The county does not maintain it. It's not, it's not open to any county standards, but it is currently used for access.
All right, we'll move to the public comment portion. There are no other questions. All those in favor of this abandonment, if you please come forward and speak, those that speak in favor of this abandonment, proposed abandonment? All right, if there's no one coming forward, we'll close, those that are in favor, we'll open up the, those that are against. Those that are against the proposed abandonment, please come forward and speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Julian Smith. I hope somebody else will come up to oppose this abandonment. You commissioners have inherited from past commissions a real problem. There has been de facto abandonment of these public alleys, these access to the rear of property over the years. The county has failed to stop citizens, property owners, from closing off sections of these alleys for their own use and thus denying their neighbors' access from one direction or the other. Why neighbors put up with this, I think you understand. You don't want to oppose or be unfriendly to your neighbor. Several years ago, I came to the commission and objected to one abandonment, and at that time I suggested that there is such a problem here, that year after year after year, there are these abandonment requests. And I sympathize with the people, with some of the people who request this abandonment because typically it turns out they have bought a property and they bought it seeing that there was a, a big tree in the backyard or this, or a shed, storage shed and so on. And then they discover they don't actually own the land under that shed or under that tree or under that landscaped area. So they do the right thing. They hire a consultant or a engineer. They have a survey done. Sometimes they have a lawyer come in. They go to the trouble to apply for an abandonment, and they usually get it. I suggested at that time several years ago that you need to have county staff figure out what portions of these alleys are still open and what portions that are still on the tax map as county property, what portions have been taken, not by eminent domain, not by adverse possession, but just taken without any staff, with any, without any official in the county saying, "Wait a minute, you can't do that." Well, that is not what has happened. The, the staff has sort of thrown up its hands and said, "Okay, we're going to do a wholesale abandonment, and then we're going to put the obligation on property owners if, if they don't want to provide these easements, et cetera, et cetera, then we will rescind the abandonment." That makes absolutely no sense. It makes no sense. You may think it makes sense, your attorney may say it makes sense, but it does not make sense. It allows the status quo to continue. Now, I do want to congratulate and thank the county engineer. For the first time in all the years I have come before this board to object to abandonment, individual abandonment, for the first time, he has not said, "There is no evidence that these sections of alley were ever open to the public." And I've criticized him for that again and again. Tonight, he has not done so, so I, I thank him for that. Now, if you look at the location map, you will see between Fifth Street and Ninth Street, one, two, three, four blocks where we have the message, "Not part of abandonment action." Well, I'm glad they're not part of abandonment action, but I call your attention to the fact that the alleys between north of Seventh Street and south of Ninth Street, marked on your map, is not part of this action, that sections of those alleys have been blocked by property owners. I have photographs of them. You can go and walk, try to walk north from Fifth Street and, I'm sorry, from Sixth Street, and you will find that there is a gate. And if you go through the gate, you'll be in someone's backyard, and you'll see all the nice landscaping and the fruit trees planted there. And if you walk across their backyard in what is still a public right-of-way, I know, you will find a huge tree growing there. That has been blocked for years. The same thing a block north. So I've taken a little more time, but if you would take the time to ask the county staff to give you the information you really need, I think that would benefit you and the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else who wants to speak in opposition to the abandonment, proposed abandonment?
Hi, I'm Kathy Miller. We're the Millers, so it's not really opposition, but I just wanted to point out that our alley, we use it as access to our garage, but it has a sewer manhole on it behind our, you know, when we pull out, so the whole, if something happens that, for public access, they have to come all the way down that alley, you know, to our garage and access that the city does. So there's a manhole back there. So that's what I was concerned about too. So I think Mr. Lippman had the same thing recently. Something happened on Ocean, and so they had to go down that alley on Fifth and go all the way down into their big trucks and everything and dig it all up. So I was just saying, I think the alley always have to be open for access for that manhole. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition to proposed abandonment? Anyone else? Not, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion regarding the proposed abandonment. Commissioners... I'm sorry, Mr. Smith, you, thank you for correcting me. The public hearing portion of this proposed abandonment, commissioners, are there any discussion or questions that you have concerning this before we move forward?
Yes, a few more. Paul, you'll come back up.
Yes, sir.
So yeah, it's been this particular one, which I know for you and the research has been all of East Beach. We've been trying to clear up these easements, what's being used, where are utilities? The county does not own any of these properties entitled. These are easements, is that correct?
That is. Yes, sir.
Okay. So it's not county property. It's an easement agreement. I'm just trying to get clear which ones are we actually abandoning and not abandoning because you have Georgia Power, you have the folks here that are using... you have the folks here that are using, like we had in a previous one, that are using that easement to drive to get in their house. So will you go back over exactly which ones we are abandoning? Or you recommending?
This item addresses all of the alleys to try to take as much as the direction the board gave staff to abandon alleys in these four blocks. My recommendation, or the, the write-up that was put out and posted, had all the alleys in these four blocks being abandoned, just the alley parallel into the west of Bruce not being part of this. That's, due to that transmission line, that's so sensitive, I wanted to make sure that there was no confusion, that this action made sure that it was clear that this alley was not part of this action. Georgia Power has told me that if there's a, if that alley goes away, their transmission lines have to get relocated. And that's not something, I don't believe that's something the county wants to be involved with. So in an effort to make it very clear, we, outside of alley parallel into the west of Bruce, this, this item abandons all the, all the alleys in these four blocks. The color coding is, is an indication of what is required in order to finalize that abandonment in the three years that the motion gives. Some of them require a utility easement, some require an access easement, some of them require both. The Millers would require both access and utility easements. All of them will require drainage easements, but that's one that, that the county writes up as part of the quitclaim operation, or quitclaim deed preparation, I'm sorry. So all of these, all of the alleys, I, I, just for clarification, I did not include these. Those were recently abandoned. That action has already been taken. They haven't shown up on the tax records yet. But the, y'all have already taken action to abandon, abandon these alleys. The, the board has already taken action. Those have been abandoned. And so they're, that's already been done. But the rest of the unabandoned alleyways in these four blocks are part of this.
I, I think, Mr. Andrews, we're trying to get down to what the amended motion might be for the Millers and, and any other deviation that we've had from when the report first came out to what we're trying to vote on tonight.
The amended motion takes this section and removes this section from your, from your action. And that, that will then not be part of the abandonment and would then remain as public right of way. From my original, I was made aware that residents along this alley feel like, they, they let me know that they have underground power in that alleyway. Georgia Power did not identify that as one, but in an effort to make sure we don't leave any utilities unavailable for service, went ahead and changed this alley over to requiring a utility easement as well as a drainage easement. As, as they, as the owners move forward with that, Georgia Power will identify the extent of the easements they need. And at that time, they'll determine exactly how much of that alley is needed for an easement for them. So those are the changes from your, from what was posted last.
And your amended motion, or proposed motion is on the screen up there somewhere?
The, the amended motion respecting the request from the property owners is, is the alternative motion as shown.
And this includes the removal of, the abandonment of the Millers and the Lippmans also?
The, the Millers, yes. The Lippmans. I did not read theirs as having a request to remove theirs. They, they had comments about this action going to the board.
Are they the one that shared the driveway with the Millers? Is that correct, Lippman? No?
I do not believe so.
I know this has been a tenuous project, cleaning up East Beach. Commissioner, we've, we've got a lot of different stuff on here. I'd like just defer this to the next meeting, make sure we, we got it all clear. I mean, we're trying to clean up all of East Beach, and this is why it's a mess and has been. But how, how do y'all feel about that?
Yeah, I would support that, because I'm confused.
Absolutely. We want, want to make sure we get all the requests in and, and clear to y'all as to what the action is.
Right. Make it a clear motion when we get there, please. Okay. Everybody okay with that now? All right, I'll make a motion to defer this item until our next regular meeting.
Second. Second. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Fendig to defer item 16 until the next published meeting. We have a second by Commissioner Booker and Commissioner Rofolsky. Any other discussion, commissioners? All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes seven zero.
Paul, thank you. It's a lot of hard work, and I'll follow back up with you in those different options to make sure we get it right. Thank you.
Item number 17, public hearing land use, CUP 4914 Brunswick Storage Conditional Use Permit. Request for a conditional use permit for mini warehouse, climate controlled storage facility in the Highway Commercial Zoning District 100 and 200 Daniel Lane, partial ID number 03-21612 and 0320987. Brian Hunt, Robert Civil Engineering, Agent for Design Management Advised, DMA, applicant. And Stephen, if I pronounce this correctly, Juris Owner, is that correct? Did I pronounce that correct? Ms. Leaf.
Good evening, Commissioners. Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. The CUP 4919 Brunswick Storage. And this is a new climate controlled storage building on New Jessup Highway through 41. The, in the Highway Commercial Zoning District, mini warehouse, climate controlled storage is a conditional use. That is why it's before you tonight. And the new building proposed is 23,868 square feet, and they are required to have a site plan that goes along with this. And the site plan is currently planned to be on the April Mainland Planning Commission meeting. And this is the property right here on New Jessup. And the existing building is towards the back of the property, and the new building will be towards the front. And this is a photo from New Jessup looking towards the property. This is their survey. And their proposed plan. And it is access off of Daniel Lane, which is an easement off of New Jessup. And these are the conceptual elevations of the new building. And the Mainland Planning Commission reviewed this on March 8th and held a public hearing, and it was unanimously recommended to the board to approve this conditional use permit. We have one commissioner absent, so it was six oh. And these are your possible actions tonight. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And I believe Mr. Brian Hunt from Robert Civil Engineering and the applicants are here this evening if you have questions with them.
Any questions for Ms. Leaf? If not, we'll open up the public hearing portion. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this proposed conditional use permit? If so, please come to the podium. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Brian Hunt with Robert Civil Engineering. I'm here asking that you approve this conditional use permit as presented. And also, the applicant is here as well, Brian Fisher with Design Manage Advised. So I'm here with any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Yes, and I'm Brian Fisher from Design Manage Advised, here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, well, this is public hearing portion of the, of the, of the land use permit. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of this conditional use permit? Anyone else? If not, we'll close it. Those that are opposed to this conditional use permit, would please come forward and speak, to speak against. Is there anybody here to speak against this? No one here to speak against this. We'll close this portion of the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions, comments, or motions?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve CUP 4919.
Second. We've got a, a motion on the, to approve CUP 4919 by Commissioner Neal, a second by Commissioner Rofolsky. Is there any other discussion, commissioners? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. That passes unanimously seven oh. Item number 18. ZM 4931 Glendale Park, J.E. Kirkland Enterprises Rezone. Request to rezone an approximately 9.9 acre tract from R9, M20, and MH21 family residential zoning districts to planned development district, PD. The property is located at 145 and 149 Glendale Drive, 109 and 110 Thistle Lane, and one landlocked parcel, parcel number 0303664, 0310771, 03-09294, 03-15689, and 03-03662. The proposed uses are material storage for a limited time, two years, single-family and multifamily residential and commercial. Jake Hightower, Robert Civil Engineering, Agent for Josh Kirkland, J.E. Kirkland Enterprises LLC, applicant and owner. Ms. Leaf?
Thank you. This is ZM 4931 Glendale, J.E. Kirkland Enterprises Rezone. This is a residential zone property that has had commercial woodchip storage on it for almost a year now. So the mix of zoning is R9, M20, and MH20, so it's all single-family. Their future land use map for this area is commercial, and the character area map and the comprehensive plan is mixed use. This is the property right here. It's at the corner of Pickrick and Glendale. And currently, they have an access into the site for the woodchip delivery and hauling out off of Glendale. So just some of the history on this. This did come to the county's attention about a year ago. This was a complaint that the county Community Development Department received about the woodchip storage on the residential property. So we have been in conversations with Mr. Kirkland since that time. This is actually a third application he has submitted to rezone the property, because in earlier conversations, the discussion was cleaning up the property immediately, because it is a zoning violation. Or another option would be to try to get compliance and to apply to rezone the property to bring it into compliance with what it's being used for. So Mr. Kirkland did go the application for rezone route. So the first application was not complete, and then when there was not a resubmital after a certain amount of time, we did close out the application. The second one was withdrawn by the applicant. And this third one was to go the planned development route, and that is the one that's before you this evening. So they do have a planned development text. There's two versions that are in your packet. The second one was revised based on MPC recommendation. So the initial planned development text did include a mix of commercial and residential uses, and for the woodchip storage to be allowed on the site for a period of two years. And when this was heard by the Mainland Planning Commission on March 8th, through public comment and deliberation by the commission, they did have a list of conditions that they placed on the application. They did recommend approval of it with these conditions, that it was limited to residential, so none of the commercial uses that were listed, the PD texts would be allowed, only residential uses would be allowed on the site. And then instead of two years for the woodchip storage, reducing that to 18 months. And then within 30 days, moving the entrance to Pickrick Street, there were some concerns about the safety of that access being off of Glendale. So the recommendation was to move the access off of Glendale and of Pickrick. Also to install a six-foot fence along Glendale to provide a screen along Glendale. And then also to prohibit any additional hauling in of material. So the only activity on the site should be hauling material off the site and no new haul-in of material. And this is a survey of the property. And then this is a photo of the woodchip storage taken from Glendale looking in. And then this is on Glendale looking across the street. This is a medium residential zone property called Suddler's Cove. It was built in the last couple of years, duplex development. And this was version one of the planned development text that was in your packet. This was what the applicant submitted. And I'll just skim through these slides quickly. And then version two is, has been revised per the MPC recommendation with those conditions incorporated. And they also revised the master plan uses for the site based on those conditions. And this was a Mainland Planning Commission decision. It was unanimous to recommend approval with that list of conditions. We had one commissioner absent, and I had already gone over the list of conditions. I won't go through those again. And these are your possible actions. Please note, the first two, the first one is to approve the proposed zoning decision as recommended by the MPC pursuant to PD text version two. And the second one would be if you were in favor of the initial submittal, approval of the proposal zoning decision as initially submitted pursuant to PD text version one. And then there's alternate, alternate options, approving it with other conditions, continue the hearing to a future date, remand the application back to the planning commission, or deny the application. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And both Mr. Hightower from Robert Civil Engineering and the owner, Mr. Kirkland, are here tonight. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Leaf? All right, we'll open up the public hearing portion of this. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of ZM 4931? If you would, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this ZM 4931, item number 18? All right, no one here that wishes to speak in favor. We'll go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing. Are there any of those who wish to speak in opposition to this ZM 4931? If so, please come to the front and state your name.
My name's Jeff Kilgore, and I think this is one of the most reprehensible situations that I've ever heard about or encountered in Glen County. These people that buy that property count on you and your ordinances to protect their investment and to protect them from this kind of incursion and this misuse of residential property. I don't understand how community development didn't stop this immediately. I don't know why. There wasn't a stop work placed on that site immediately. How it's gone on for a year, and those residents had to put up with it, is something that, whether it bothers you or not, I don't know. I just question each of you. If this showed up next door to you, how would you react? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore. Anyone else like to speak in opposition?
I'm Julian Smith, and I want to thank Mr. Kilgore for his brief comments. I certainly agree with him. I wonder, have all of you actually visited the site? Have you seen it? Have you stepped onto it? Have you looked at that, that mess? If not, you should not be voting on this, to approve this. I would recommend that you either deny this flat out right now, or you defer it to such time as this site has been cleared, cleaned up. The, in the presentation from staff, in your staff memo, there's no indication of how much sawdust and woodchips, processed woodchips are here. processed woodchips, are here. In the Brunswick News this morning, Taylor Cooper said there were several tons. In the Islander this week, or last week, Matthew Permar mentions, I believe, 23,000 tons of woodchips. These are woodchips that were hauled, I believe, from the storage facility on the south end of Brunswick, which means hundreds of dump trucks have gone from that storage facility where the fire started and dumped the woodchips here, rather on Glendale Drive. Is there anyone here from the fire department who can talk about the number of fires that have had to be put out? At the end of the Second World War, one of my older cousins went to prison because he had made a fortune in tires, that he should, black-market tires during the war. When he got out of prison, he bought a big piece of land near a river, and he hauled in hundreds of thousands of dump truck loads of sawdust from sawmills in St. Tammany Parish where he grew up. And that damn sawdust caught fire. He eventually brought in more fill on top of the sawdust and built a Chevrolet agency. Died a rich man, an evil drunken rich man. So, yeah, I happen to know a little something about sawdust. I come from a family in the timber and sawmill business in Louisiana. Look, you don't have enough information to make an informed decision. The MPC did the best it could, asked all kinds of questions, and got some strange answers. You should take a look at that MPC meeting. Why they unanimously voted to do this, is to recommend that you approve this with these conditions, is really beyond me. There should have been criminal charges brought in this matter, but there weren't. Authorities in this county seem to be so concerned with property rights, they forget that sometimes there are property wrongs. That some property owners do wrong things, things that affect the environment, things that affect neighboring properties, and so on. And you ought to have staff go out, code enforcement staff, go out and start looking at other dump sites. For instance, until recently, and I brought this to the attention of the county commission several years ago, behind Benny's Red Barn, there were hundreds of cubic yards of broken concrete, broken sidewalk, just stacked up in an area that will become 50 Oaks after they take out some of the oaks. That was behind Benny's Red Barn. Take a drive along Horseshoe Loop, Horseshoe Circle off of Canal Road. The owner of that property has hauled in hundreds or thousands of cubic yards of dirt and stumps, and dumped them between the trailers. The stuff is being stored there illegally. It's not a dump site. It's a mobile home park, a beautiful location with rundown and some abandoned trailers, some of which should be removed.
Mr. Smith, your time is up.
Well, I've taken up five minutes. Please deny this.
Thank you.
Or at least get some more information before you make a decision. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to this ZM 4931? Please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, or evening, Glen County Commissioners. My name is Rachel Thompson, Executive Director of the Glen Environmental Coalition. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on case number ZM 4931. The Glen Environmental Coalition has been monitoring this property since earlier this year when citizens began contacting our office. Complaints and concerns from the community included not understanding why the land was abruptly cleared without any public participation processes, concerns regarding wetlands on the property, dust, noise, and other air quality concerns, and concerns for the types of material being stored on site. Further investigation by the GEC in coordination with Glen County staff and the Environmental Protection Division revealed that the property owner cleared property without securing a land clearing permit. In addition, they had not submitted any erosion and sedimentation plans, and no best management practices were installed on site. Since our investigation started in May of 2021, we have compiled eight documented complaints filed to the Environmental Protection Division. Complaints showcase the blatant neglect of local ordinance and state laws in regards to proper storage and transport of material. This should be taken into consideration by this commission when considering to allow the property owner to continue to store and transport material from this site for the next 18 months. Material currently stored on site are relocated wood pellets from Logistec following the large fires in May, which the state fire marshal required Logistec to relocate all of the material to be stored elsewhere. EPD reports that material was injected with foam in an attempt to reduce its temperature, and thus its chance of spontaneous combustion. It also has metal pieces up to three feet long from the fire. In addition to the wood pellets, a second gray substance identified as, by the property owner, as perlite showed up in September, again without receiving permission to place the material on site from local authorities. Before approving this zoning request, the commissions should consider the potential public health and environmental implications of its storage nearby current and future residential properties. Let's skip forward, so I try to get everything done. We highly suggest that the commission does not approve this rezoning request based on detailed information that we have provided over the past few weeks. It's not the Glen County Commission's responsibility to rezone this property to ensure the property gets into compliance. That responsibility falls solely on the property owner, who has neglected to come to the various commissions to request permission for any of the activities currently taking place on their property. As an alternative, we recommend that the commission shorten the proposed timeline for allowing material storage to a minimum of nine months and/or no greater than 12 months. The Mainland Planning Commissioners discussed the length of time to allow the stored material to persist on site for quite some time during their meeting last week. Many commissioners felt that two years was an exceptional amount of time, and that 12 months was more appropriate. Ultimately, they voted to compromise at 18 months, a compromise we don't believe was warranted based on the blatant neglect this property owner has shown to local laws and land use ordinances. It took the property owner less than three months to illegally store two types of material on site. It is not unreasonable to believe that they can remove it within nine months or at minimum within the year. If you move forward with approving this zoning request as it is, an important question to ask is what precedent does this set for Glen County? That property owners can do what they please and simply apply for rezoning requests later so they don't face legal ramifications? This property owner has been operating a light industrial operation on residential property since May of 2021. We are asking that the commissioners hold the property owner accountable to clean up the mess they have made, rather than granting them special permission and excusing the behavior. This kind of neglect and the decisions following from past county leadership is what has led to the development of dozens of hazardous waste sites over the year that we are still dealing with today. Do you believe that individuals or entities should be allowed to clear land and conduct light industrial activities without explicitly getting permission from the county, you, to do so? And if the answer is no, then we implore you to not approve this zoning request. Thank you for the opportunity to comment, and I can be available for questions if necessary.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against this ZM 4931? Please state your name for the record.
Jane Fraser, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I think the number-one job of any elected official is public safety. I think you cannot compromise when public health is concerned. If there is spontaneous combustion, do you all understand what that is? And have you watched what happened at Logitech? I'm sure you have. I don't understand either why the fire department isn't represented on this issue and what their opinion is, and I would suggest at the very least that you would defer until you have a good report from the fire department. How will they contain a fire at this location? How will they protect the public? Public health is our major concern. That should be your major concern. So, I hope you will not only deny this, but fine these people for endangering our fellow citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fraser. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this rezoning? Anyone else? If not, we'll close this portion of the public hearing. It's closed. Commissioners, any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I am not interested in considering any kind of rezoning on this property at this time. And I'll certainly, you know, I'll certainly make a motion here. And I'll make a statement before I make the motion. In the 17, 18 years that I've been on planning commission and sitting at this dais, this is the most egregious thing I've ever seen as far as zoning is concerned. And I can buy the zoning, but the total disregard of the property rights of the people that live around there is unforgivable. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion, and this is a generous motion, that the property be required to return to compliance on our current zoning, applicable to our current zoning ordinance, and that the owner of the property be given 90 days to do it.
Second. All right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Brunson, and a second by Commissioner Tossen. Is there any further discussion, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I personally would like to see a fine levied on the owner because it's not just the property rights of the other folk, but it's like was stated by Ms. Thompson, the health. And I agree with the other statements being made by all the speakers against this property tonight. I just can't believe it. My other concern is with the staff and what was our procedure in allowing this to go on for so long. So, I don't know. I don't see Ms. Thompson here tonight, or whoever's over the code enforcement now. But I really think we need to review that because this should not have happened this long to put this neighborhood in this kind of jeopardy. I've lived by a similar situation in my neighborhood, and we never really was able to get it fixed. It's better now that somebody else bought the property, and they cleaned it up. But I think a fine should be levied as well as I would give them really 45 days.
And Commissioner Booker, I can respond to that. There is an active code enforcement case, and we have issued multiple citations there, and there are court dates. Because of it going through this process, we are waiting to see the outcome of this, and so we have pushed the court date out to April. But we have been actively following that. Our code enforcement officers have been by that site very frequently, and if we get a complaint or they see a new truck hauling, hauling any materials in, we have issued citations for that.
Is there anyone here from Robert's Engineering that represents this?
Yes, sir. Mr. Hightower?
Please.
I'd like to ask Mr. Kirkland to come up also.
Mr. Hightower, how long did it take to create this debacle?
Sir, I became involved in September of 2021, so I think the best person to speak to that would be Mr. Kirkland, the applicant himself.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Yes, sir. It took about 30 days to haul all the sawdust in. We are actively hauling it out at 150, 200 tons a day, six and seven days a week. We admit that by far I was in the wrong and haven't done so without getting approval, without getting it rezoned first, and we're working diligently as fast as we can to clean it up.
I was out there today, Mr. Kirkland, and you.
Yes, sir.
I've been out there half a dozen times.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, I just, it's hard to tell 90 days ago.
It's on the right-hand side, Mr. Brunson.
I went all the way around it. Also, I'm disappointed there weren't pictures of the houses behind it that are almost contiguous to the piles of.
Across the power line you're referring to?
Across the power line. They're almost contiguous to those piles. And if, God help us, if there was a fire, every one of those houses would.
Well, we currently have sprinkler systems on, Mr. Brunson.
They did it. They poured it well.
They're, at the port, they were in a pelletized state. And here, since they've been wet, they've returned to a sawdust state, which is not combustible like they are in pelletized form. They don't give off the same emission of gases that causes spontaneous combustion.
Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Hightower, Mr. Kirkland?
Yes, I have for Mr. Kirkland.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kirkland, that's a pretty big operation you've got going on, so I presume that you're a pretty smart guy. How do you explain your actions?
Initially, when I was approached by Fram, all of this, and I approached Pine Nova about taking this material, you know, Pine Nova agreed to take the material at their site. Their lawyers, after I agreed to take the material, told them they'd have to pay for all the material upfront if they had it on their property, thus kind of putting me in a predicament. And that's how we arranged, arrived at where we're at.
Well, you knowingly and willfully stored that material knowing it was out of compliance.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
You know, a lot of our speakers, I think, find it unusual that the commission would agree with them, or at least myself.
Yes, sir.
Speaking of myself, but I mean, I'm just, you know, I'm really surprised because that was knowingly and willfully.
I fully admit that I was in the wrong, Commissioner Fendig, and as I mentioned a while ago, we are actively hauling it out of there as fast as we can to Pine Nova. I've recently bought a screener this past week. Ordered it two weeks ago, actually, to help facilitate the moving of material at a faster state to screen material cleaner. We're in contact with Rayonier and Jessup as well about possibly hauling material to them in addition to Pine Nova.
Well, people also, variety, people told me it took you about three, three and a half months to haul everything in there. Is that correct?
It took about five or six weeks, I think, total.
Okay. All right, commissioners, we have, thank you, Mr. Kirkland, Mr. Hightower. Commissioners, we have a motion on the floor. Could I have the readback of that motion, please? Do you have a, can we have a readback of the motion or a restatement of the motion since we've had some further discussion?
I think your mic's off, Commissioner Brunson. I will restate my motion. Mr. Chairman, I move that the owner be required to return the property to be in compliance with the current zoning ordinances that are applicable to our zoning for the property, and he be given three months to complete that operation.
Yes, Counselor?
Commissioner Brunson, can we also get a, to include in that motion, a motion on what you want to do with the application that's pending? It sounds like you would like to deny the application.
Yes, I would like to deny the application and don't consider any rezoning at this time.
So, we have a motion on the floor to deny the rezoning application when, and require the owner to move the current material off within 90 days. Is that correct? Are we all in agreement? That's the correct motion? Commissioner Tossen, would you still want to second it? Commissioner Tossen has a second. We have any further discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion passes 7-0. Item number 19. ZM 4932, Oscar Lane Plan Development District. Request to rezone parcel 03-14053, 03-14054, 03-14055, 03-14056, and 03-14057 on Oscar Lane from the Palm Trace Plan Development District, GC-45-79 into a newly created planned development district. All proposed uses are residential. Robert E. Blackwell? Robert E. Blackwell, out of Gee LLC Owner. Ms. Leaf.
Thank you. ZM 4932, Oscar Lane and P D. This is off of Highway 17, Oscar Lane. There are five lots that are in an existing planned development called the Palm Trace Plan Development. The P D text had a density cap of 136 dwelling units within the entire P D, and the P D was created in 1979. So since 1979, the Palm Trace Apartments have been... Or I'm sorry, the Palm Club Apartments have been constructed, as well as three duplex lots. So all of the density has been taken up by those projects. So there's 136 units out there, and that is the cap of the density, which leaves these five lots within this P D with having really no developable rights and no economically viable use. So that is why the applicant's requesting a new P D to establish some development rights on the property and a density and some uses. So the new P D, or the proposed P D, would be similar to the medium residential zoning. It would include single-family homes, townhomes, multifamily dwellings. It would also add mobile homes that would be allowed within the P D. That is the proposal to also include mobile homes. And the density would be 18 units per acre, but it's a very small area. So based on the square footage, a maximum of 15 units could be placed out there, you know, if the owner or future owners did multifamily. So the max of 15 on this site. So these are the lots right here. This is the Palm Club Apartments behind here. There is a duplex on this lot across the street on Oscar Lane. These are single-family. As you go further out, kind of north of the screen, there are some mobile homes down in this area. But largely, this is single-family and duplex down in this area here. And this is the plat for these five lots. So the Mail and Planning Commission had a public hearing on this on March 8th. They voted 5-1. Commissioner Newe opposed and Commissioner Strickland absent to recommend approval of this rezon to the board. And these are your possible actions to approve the zoning decision as recommended or with modifications or remand it or deny it. I'm happy to answer any questions. And I believe Mr. Blackwell is here as the owner, and he's happy to answer questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leaf. Commissioners, any questions before we open up the public hearing? If not, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. All those who wish to speak in favor of ZM 4932, item number 19, please come forward, state your name for the record.
I'm Bob Blackwell with the applicant. I'm not sure if I'm supposed to speak now. Obviously, I'm in favor of it, or if I'm supposed to wait for you guys to ask me questions.
Well, you can speak to it if you like to during this five minutes. If we need to call you back up, we will.
Okay. Well, the reason Commissioner Newe, I believe, I'm putting words in her mouth, did not vote for approval. If we could go back to that map. So one of the requests is for, you know, mobile homes. There's a difference, I guess, between manufactured home, which is also requested, manufactured and mobile. So, as was said, apartments to the east, duplexes at the corner...
Speak in front of the mic, please, sir.
Sorry. Apartments to the east, duplex on the corner, two duplexes at the north of where the five stars are. And then the area that's off the screen is approximately 100 mobile homes, about half of which are in a more or less a situation where the mobile homeowner owns the lot. The other half is basically where they're leased lots. So everything pretty much south of Palm, from 17 all the way to this makes that big S curve to the west, all those are duplexes. And between north of Palm and south of the mobile home line, that strip is single-family homes that were built, at least the ones right across the street appear to have been built, you know, late '70s, early '80s. And so one of the reasons that I requested mobile homes is that, well, really, nobody knew that this problem existed. You know, I've done a lot of real estate, and there's always some twist. But for somebody to be allowed, to have been allowed to steal the units off land they didn't own, it baffles me. But so... But anyways, you know, costs are very expensive. This neighborhood is, you know, it's more of a starter neighborhood, I would say. And potentially, mobile homes may be the only affordable way to go here, although, you know, currently, nothing seems to be affordable. So, you know, there are standards for skirting for mobile homes. There's also in mobile, in the... I don't know exactly what we call it, but the mobile home district, when you allow that, there's manufactured homes. And those, I would say, are probably higher quality. There are standards in your zoning that, in my text, I said I would comply with, things like 4 to 1 roof slope, at least 20 feet wide, you know, permanently attached, skirting. I think there may be one... Oh, and actually, the exterior materials would be similar to what you would use in single-family or normal housing units and applied in a similar manner. So again, I guess the dilemma, if I were in your shoes, would be, you know, do I allow mobile homes? And if you don't like that, then I would at least say, you know, please allow manufactured homes because hopefully those will be more affordable. Ideally, you know, we'll stick build. But, you know, again, costs are crazy, and, you know, I would prefer not to see this land sit dormant for 30 more years. So.
Thank you, Ms. Blackwell.
Any others? Yeah, wait, I have a question. Now, you go down to Oscar Lane and you get up a little further north that's not shown. There are mobile homes up there, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And there's a mobile home park on the other side of that road further on. I wish you had a better detailed map of this.
Right. There's two roads north of there. The first one, just north of the kind of horizontal line, is Tiffany Lane.
And that's mobile homes.
That's mobile homes, and those are generally fee... You know, the guy owns the lot that's under his mobile home. Then there's another street that's...
On the other side, there is a mobile home park there.
There's another street, and it's Culligan. Culligan, I think, is the name of it. And so on the west end of it, it's a short street. It doesn't run as long as Tiffany. On the west end, there's like a loop to the north of it. And those are all part of the same Tiffany development. And then back between that portion I mentioned and 17, behind that Culligan water treatment place, there's a mobile home park. So those would be the leased lots or maybe park-owned homes. So there is a, you know, there's definitely that in the area. And, you know, that, to a certain extent, influences, you know, what can you really build there and be assured that it's going to work economically?
Is the stars, is that where you want to put mobile home parks?
I mean, mobile home units? Or whatever. That's just one of the uses that we're saying. But I'm bringing forward and debating, you know, saying that obviously this is the controversial one, if I would say anybody would have one. The lots are, they're exactly the same. They're 85 feet by... 85 foot of frontage by 90 foot in deep. Deep, not speaking very well, but I think you know what I'm saying.
And there are duplexes that are set on those lots now, is that correct?
The lots are currently vacant. Those lots are currently vacant. And again, the whole genesis of this was that all of the units, it was originally in the planned development of everything kind of to the east of Oscar Lane with the apartments and then those eight lots. And so between the three duplexes that were built and the apartments, they literally reached the cap of what was allowed in the planned development. So that's why we're asking to pull it out, create our own little planned development, and then, you know, apply units to it. And then that's aspect A. And aspect B is what type of units would be allowed.
Commissioners, this is a public hearing portion of this rezon. So I would like to ask if there are anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of this? ZM 4932? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? If not, we'll close that out. Is there anyone who's willing, who wishes to speak in opposition to ZM 4932? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? No one here to speak in opposition? We'll close the public hearing comments. Commissioners, are there any other questions that you have for the applicant or Ms. Leaf or a motion to be made?
I have a question for them.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Blackwell. Would you be willing to eliminate mobile homes out of this P D?
If that's the consensus of the commission, then sure. And again, I brought it to your attention because that's the sticky point, I think, that Ms. Newe had.
You're very perceptive. Two members, you perceive right on two members of this commission.
Okay, so, yes, let's take it out. Let's leave in manufactured homes.
No.
Because there are a distinction.
I can't support manufactured homes there.
Well, I mean, again, per the zoning ordinance, you know, they have to have the pitched roof, 412 minimum. They have to have exterior finishes that are similar. Okay. I would still ask that it be left in, but, you know, obviously, y'all make the motions.
Did I meet with you out there a couple of years ago?
There was a...
Or somebody.
No, it was Bruce Garrett.
Yeah, Bruce Garrett.
And he's the one that figured out that there were no units. And then he actually created this, started this process, and then really never submitted.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with you having another P D text, but I can't support it with mobile homes and manufactured homes.
All right, Commissioners, do we have a motion?
I've got another question.
Oh, you have another question, I'm sorry.
On the... Ms. Leaf, I think this would be to you. There was the possibility of having up to 15 units on these five lots. Would you explain that?
That is the request from Mr. Blackwell. So, but because of, so the 15 units, so it's .88 acres is what the five lots encompass. So the max it could be is 15 based off of that. But what he had requested was 18 units per acre. So just as a comparison, the MR zoning is 16 units per acre, GR is 10 units per acre. So at 18, I mean, that is a higher density than our, you know, current zoning districts that we have in that area.
I could maybe interject, though. If you do the math, the MR density... The MR density of 16 basically results in 14 units. The 18 density, it results in a high 15 number of units, rounds down to 15. So at that density, the request is really for one additional unit versus the MR density.
I don't understand that.
Okay. Well, the MR density is 16 units per acre. So .88 acres times that is like 14.1 units. So we're asking for 18 units. And if you multiply 18 units by .88, you get like 15.78 or 9, somewhere in that range. But obviously, you can't build a partial unit, so you round that down. Both get rounded down, 1 to 15, 1 to 14, the difference being 1, if that clarifies.
And my question becomes... My question becomes, you know, how many units do you want to put there? I agree that you ought to be allowed to build on these lots.
Yes, sir.
Single-family, single-family attached, you know.
Right.
Single-unit, duplex unit. I guess under this zoning, you could actually build a triplex, although I don't know that you could reap sideline setbacks and those requirements. So it would appear to me to be a much simpler process if we get it down into that language and approve the process of whether or not you're going to build single-family duplexes and limit it to what you could put on those lots as that would exist.
Okay. So you can do townhomes, the setbacks actually don't change? So I'm kind of addressing the single-family attached. So obviously, that'd either be duplexes or more. So you can do townhomes, and the setbacks on the side are seven, no matter what the product is, in the MR, is my understanding. Maybe if it's actually multifamily, like a big apartment building, I think it may change. So anyways, that would allow you to do three units. You take off 14 from the 85. You've got about 70 feet left to build in. So, you know, whatever that times... You know, it's over 25 feet per unit. The interior one would probably be a little smaller, the exterior one would be a little bigger. So that would kind of be, if you will, a triplex or a three-unit townhome. That's kind of where the 15 units comes from, that possibly it could be built that. And those could be sold, you know, obviously, they could be rented, or they could be sold fee simple. So that might kind of bring the price point down for a buyer. So that was kind of the logic in that. Can you put the plat back up?
Hey, I want to make a statement. You know, the people with the houses across the street, you know, I'm sure they didn't think they were going to have townhomes across from them, much less mobile homes and manufactured homes.
The one back.
So that's my problem with this. I mean, the people that have already been there, you know, you're asking to rezon. Well, it's already zoned one way. So by changing it, you know, we're opening the door for... And I can't support it.
Well, so the current zoning, what is the zoning of that Palm Trace? I think it's probably MR. But, I mean, I assume that's kind of modeled under MR. Because, you know, you ended up with duplexes and apartments. So those are, to me, I mean, I don't know the zoning code exactly, but those are not single-family of any sort. So I think until Mr. Garrett determined that there were no units left, it was always implied that these were duplex lots because, you know, everything on that side is duplex or greater, everything south. It just so happens that it, you know, again, across the street, as you're saying, it's single-family. But, I mean, you can build single-family next to the duplexes, but, I mean, it seems to be more logical to build duplexes.
Thank you for that. There seems to be a lot of questions. Commissioners, do we have a question?
Yeah. I don't want to see you get denied the opportunity to build on the lots.
Yes, sir.
But what we're being presented is not clear enough for me to vote on.
Okay.
So I would recommend that we defer, come back with maybe a site plan of what you intend to put on there, keeping in mind there's not a lot of appetite for the higher density of that situation. And bring that back to us next month so maybe we can get this cleared up and move on.
Can I just ask that maybe we could just strike everything but single-family or duplexes and, you know, just leave the unit density overall at two units per lot and then vote on that?
No, no, it would be 10 total. And I could get on board with that. I don't know if we can clean the motion up enough the way it was presented. If we can legally do that, I could support a single-family or a duplex per lot on those five lots.
Okay. That would be, if we can clean that up, I would like for y'all to vote on that.
So what we're talking about is a maximum of 10 units.
Yes, sir.
On those five lots. 10 units or less.
Right, with no manufactured or modular.
Right, it'd be...
So...
Yeah, none of those.
I think what you're hearing, too, is that this commission recognizes need for affordable housing. We're looking for builders and investors that are going to upgrade and lead a fresh look and a new look to any community they're invested in. And that's, I think that's the message that we're all concerned with and are challenging you to do. If you're going to go in there and develop, do it in a way that's going to upgrade that neighborhood and bring other investors in and create an upgrade instead of a status quo or a downgrade.
Yes, sir.
All right, Commissioners. Ms. Leaf, if we were to proceed with that motion, could you... you help us craft a motion on the spot?
I, I think I can present a motion, and Mr. Attorney, if you would make sure I do it correctly. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the PD text as, uh, presented tonight, with the exception that the five lots would be limited to single-family or duplex buildings on those five lots.
And mobile homes and manufactured homes are eliminated from the...
Mobile home and manufactured homes eliminated.
And ten units per...
Maximum ten.
Maximum ten units? Okay.
And I would second that.
We have a good motion there, Mr. Attorney.
So, we'll revise the plan development text based on this motion if it passes.
Mr. Attorney, we're relying upon you to make sure that the motion's in proper order.
No, the motion's good.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Neal, a second by Commissioner Tossenson. Any further discussion? Commissioners, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Six in favor, one opposed. Thank you, sir, for working it out. Item number twenty, TA 4943, setback exemption for heating, air conditioning unit ordinance amendment. County initiated request to amend Glen County zoning ordinance, section 301, definitions and section 603, to exempt heating, air conditioning units elevated above grade from yard setback requirements. Ms. Leaf?
Thank you. This is TA 4943. This is a county-initiated amendment to the zoning code. Uh, so currently in our existing zoning code, HVAC units, whether they're elevated above grade or sitting on grade, are treated differently in the zoning code. So, if it's an elevated HVAC unit, and whether it's elevated because you're elevating above the base flood elevation for floodplain purposes, or whether it's your choice to elevate your AC unit, the elevated AC units have to conform with the yard setback requirements. Um, if it's an at-grade HVAC unit, then it can extend into the setback. Um, so this ordinance amendment basically equalizes those two types of units, so whether it's elevated or at-grade, it'll be treated the same, and that it can extend into the yard setback, and does not have to meet setback requirements. So, this is the draft that's in your packet, proposed. Um, so there's just two sections of the code that, that dealt with encroachments into yard setbacks, so, um, this is what was proposed to be changed to reflect this new provision. And just kind of an example of, we've had a few variances in the last couple of years that dealt with this. They had elevated HVAC units, so this was a site plan from a recent variance that they had to request a variance to, to go into their setback. And just a couple of photos from another application. And IPC did hear this on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, they voted six one with Commissioner Duncan opposed to recommend denial of the amendment. And some of their concerns were that there wasn't really a limit on the number of HVAC units, or maybe larger, there's some of the concerns expressed. Um, you know, there may be larger homes that have multiple units. Um, there's also concerns expressed that maybe all HVAC units, whether it's elevator at-grade, should conform to setbacks, so maybe at-grade shouldn't be treated differently as it is in the code now. Um, so they did recommend denial. And then Mail and Planning Commission held a public hearing on March eighth, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval of the amendment. So, that was six oh with Commissioner Strickland absent. Um, so you have two different recommendations coming from your planning commissions. Uh, so these are your possible actions on this, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Leaf? If not, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing portion of this, um, proposed, um, ordinance amendment. Are anyone willing to, wishing to speak for the proposed ordinance amendment? Anyone speaking for the proposed ordinance amendment? All right. Nobody speaking in favor, we'll close that portion of the public hearing. We'll open those that wish to speak against the proposed ordinance amendment. Anyone wishing to speak against the proposed ordinance amendment? Please state your name for the record.
Jane Frazier, um, and actually, my comment is, I didn't see any comments about noise. Uh, my neighbors, close by neighbors complained quite a bit about a new family that has put a unit to the side of their house, as was shown in that picture, and the noise keeps them awake all night. So, I just, my question is, have the commissioners considered noise and how that might play a role, uh, in that extension into what is intended to be a buffer, and I'm assuming it's a noise buffer, not just a space buffer? So, that would be my question, and that would be an objection for me if someone could put a very noisy unit right next to my home, at worst, my bedroom. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frazier. Is there anyone else who would speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? If so, we'll close the, that portion of the public hearing. Commissioners, any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, it may be just a crazy idea, but what if we had two sets of roofs, one for the mainland, one for the island? Um, you know, I don't know.
I'm sure there's been crazier ideas submitted in the past.
Well, you got one, you got one, um, one planning commission that thinks it's best thing since sliced bread, and the other one doesn't like it. So, the one on the island doesn't like it. So, I just threw that out for, uh, crazy thought of the day.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Brunson. Any other comments or questions? Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the ordinance as amend, amendment as presented.
All right, we've got a motion to approve the ordinance amendment as presented. A second, do we have any further discussion? All right, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed? Passes unanimously, seven zero. Item twenty-one, appointments. Consider appointing one citizen to serve on the Department of Family and Children's Services DFCS Board. The term begins immediately and ends June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. Proposed candidates are Melissa Trussell, Doris Bailey, and Mark Newman. There is one vacancy for this seat and three applicants. Call for nominations and a vote.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Mark Newman.
I'll second that.
I don't know if we need a second, is that correct?
Oh, okay.
Just a nomination?
All right.
But thank you for the second. Anybody else? All right, so, uh, Mr. Attorney, just make sure we'll vote on each one, or we just need to vote? All right, vote on the nomination of Mark Newman for the DFCS Board. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Mr. Newman passes, seven zero. Item twenty-two, consider appointing one citizen to serve on the Department of Family and Children's Services Board for the unexpired term of Tom Bowlen. The term begins immediately and ends June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Melissa Trussell, Doris Bailey, and Mark Newman. Do we have any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Doris Bailey.
We have a nomination of Doris Bailey. Anyone else? All right, we'll vote on the, the nomination of Doris Bailey. All in favor, raise your right hand. Ms. Bailey passes, seven zero. General Business, twenty-three, consider rescinding the authorization of sixty-six thousand four hundred nineteen dollars to the contract with Swindle Construction made on November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and authorize change order number one, the amount of sixty-six thousand four hundred nineteen dollars to the contract with Swindle Construction for the Glencoe Trail Project, FKA Harry Driggers Trail Phase Two, PI number zero zero one zero five eight eight, thirty-seven thousand four thirty-four fifty, and project PL number zero 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 nine zero six two, twenty-eight thousand nine eighty-four fifty. Ms. Munson?
Good evening, Commissioners. Um, I will do my best to make this as clear as possible. It's kind of muddy, but, um, this is the Harry Driggers South Project that's on Sploß Five. And, um, if you remember, we went out to bid, the bids came in too high, we had you all reject the bids, um, and then the DOT, uh, DOT offered to give us extra money so that we could finish this project. So, um, we're going to have a total of eight hundred thousand in grant funds to go towards this project. Um, the, um, in the meantime, the, the contractor who had bid on the proposal said, six months has passed, I can't continue to hold this bid, I'm going to need another sixty-six thousand four nineteen to be able to do this. So, we came before you, asked you to approve that sixty-six four nineteen out of Sploß twenty sixteen excess funds, um, as it's, all, there's a portion of that project that's also being built from Sploß twenty sixteen. Um, in the meantime, we found out that the DOT was not aware of the additional sixty-six four nineteen cost to that project. So, to make this clean and to not jeopardize our grant funding, we're recommending you rescind the original sixty-six four nineteen additional authorization to the contract and approve change order number one, which has now been approved by the DOT, um, so that our grant funding will not be in jeopardy for this project.
Nothing like jumping through the government hoops, right?
I could have practiced for six months, and I couldn't have presented that, what she just did.
All right, Commissioners, comments, questions, motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to rescind the authorization of sixty-six thousand four hundred nineteen dollars to the contract with Swindell Construction made on November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and authorize change order number one in the amount of sixty-six thousand four hundred nineteen thousand dollars to the contract with Swindell Construction for the Glencoe Trail Project, oh, Harry Driggers Trail Phase Two, uh, PI number zero zero one oh five eight eight, thirty-seven thousand four thirty-four fifty, and project PI zero 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 nine oh six two, in the amount of twenty-eight nine forty-eight, nine eighty-four fifty.
We have a motion by Commissioner Folsky, a second by Commissioner Booker. Are there any other discussion, Commissioners?
Um, Ms. Munson, is that the recommendation, is you would like to, was that how you had understood?
Yes.
Okay. Because it was clear as mud right here, so, thank you.
Trust you.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? For it, okay. Uh, that motion passes, seven zero. Item number twenty-four, consider the issuance of a purchase order to Southeastern Engineering, Inc., utilizing professional services exemption, the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars for a survey of Sea Island-Fredrica Road intersection for potential intersection improvements with funding to be provided by Capital Projects Fund allocation at large post one. Mr. Austin?
Uh, happy to thank, uh, St. Patrick's Day Chairman and Commissioners. I'm wearing green today, I think. Um, so we're here today for the next step in the intersection improvement at Frederica and Sea Island Road, and the next step is to survey that intersection, uh, so that we can match the survey with the concept drawings. You may remember when we were doing, uh, King's Way and Frederica, they did a couple of concept drawings. Concept drawings are nothing more than a sketch superimposed over a map, but you got to have, you got to actually serve, start surveying the points in. So, it's a thirty-five thousand dollar, uh, professional services request, and that breaks down to about twenty thousand dollars of field data collection. The field data collection is the boots-on-the-ground survey team out surveying the, the, all the points, all the utilities, or, or all the points necessary, uh, to do the design. Uh, that's about a two-week process. Prior to that, for about five thousand dollars, uh, we need to mark, uh, do the utilities marking by a third-party locate firm. Okay, nor, normally you would say, why don't you have eight-one-one do that? We typically do have eight-one-one do that in the right of way, but in this case, we need to know exact, sometimes eight-one-one is not exactly right. So, we need to know exactly where all this stuff is, and we recommend, uh, a utility marking, uh, party for that. And then all that data, uh, is shipped off to SEI, and for ten thousand dollars, uh, they do the, uh, they take the field data and produce a topographic CAD in MicroStation, uh, that will, uh, that will show that, how that roundabout, okay, in, in this case, a roundabout fits in that location. Okay? So, uh, that's what, uh, we're here for, that whole process. The first two actions, probably conservatively, six weeks, and the second action, six weeks. So, we're talking about a twelve-week process.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Austin? Any comments?
Mr. Austin, regardless of roundabout or extended turn lanes or intersection improvement, I mean, flyover or whatever, this work, it needs to be done in order to identify what's under the ground. Is that where we come from?
Oh, correct, and it, and it also needs to be done specifically in the roundabout position. If you go roundabout, there's some discussion about how big the center of the roundabout needs to be or we want it to be. So, so you can make the roundabout, uh, the diameter, uh, 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 short, not shorter, but smaller or larger. And, uh, so, uh, there's been a, uh, a movement to try and make it larger and a larger greener, green space, because, uh, there's some advantages to a larger roundabout as far as, uh, sequencing around the roundabout, zipping in and out of the roundabout, and then there's, uh, there's added, uh, uh, there's added green space in the middle.
I guess my question was, if you weren't, we're not considering a roundabout, would you do this work?
We'd still have to do the survey work. Oh, absolutely, yes, sir. We still have to do the survey work for the, for the lane improvements.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I think it's also noted, you know, any lane improvements would have to have the consideration of dual turn lanes left and right, uh, which is a very wide, wide, uh, expanse of asphalt, so this work would have to be done regardless. Commissioners, any further questions or comments, and if not, do we have a motion?
Yes, sir. I'll move to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Southern Engineering, Inc., utilizing the professional services exemption, in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars for a survey of Sea Island-Fredrica Road intersection for potential intersection improvements with funding to be provided by Capital Projects Fund capital allocation at large post one.
We have a second. We have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, a second by Commissioner Folsky. Is there any more discussion? If not, uh, all in favor, please raise your right hand. That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Okay, item twenty-five.
And, Mr. Chairman, I will recuse myself for this item.
All right. Item twenty-five. Where did we add that? Right here. Item twenty-five, consider approval of application FP four seven five four and accept a performance bond, the amount of one million three hundred sixty-two thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars. Bond number CICI nine two one zero four two from Capital Indemnity Corporation for a period not to exceed two years from the date of final approval by the Board of Commissioners. The remaining improvements shall be completed within two years unless an extension is approved by the Board of Commissioners. Is there any staff speaking on this? Seems pretty straightforward, but I didn't know if there was anyone speaking on it.
If you have any questions on it, we're happy to answer them. We don't have a presentation, per se.
I guess, Mr. Attorney, for a recap of the long discussion about this property and all the, uh, insinuations and legal concerns and so forth, will you kind of recap what's happening here and what's been the situation previous?
Certainly.
And now what's happening?
I'll be glad to. Um, so I'll go back to the August fifth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the Board, where the Board, um, approved conditionally the final plat on the condition that, um, that bond was, was received in the amount of, uh, one million three hundred sixty-two thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars, um, which means that that bond was not finally approved, it was conditionally approved, pending, uh, acceptance of a, um, a bond that was, that met the county's requirements. In time since then, uh, staff has worked with the developer, uh, and their different agents and brokers to, um, come up with a bond... to come up with a bond that the county staff, including myself, found acceptable. That went from a bond to potential letter of credit and back to a bond, and then as of yesterday, we, we got a bond back in the form that we find acceptable as staff. So the next step is to have the Board approve that bond with the amount of the bond, with the surety, as well as the amount of time they have to complete the infrastructure improvements, which is one year. So the bond is in order, and the bond is before you tonight for approval and acceptance.
And will you repeat very carefully what the developer was not allowed to do before this action gets taken?
So the developer was not allowed to do anything that required final plat approval. That's signing off on the final plat, that is subdividing the lots, which is the main part of this, subdivision of lots where you can build out and sell the lots was not allowed. And the final plat was not allowed to be recorded. Those three things have not been done as of today.
Okay, thank you.
Once they meet the condition being, they, they submit a bond that we find to be acceptable, and the Board approves the surety and the, the time length, then those, that condition is met and they can move forward. But they have not been allowed to do anything that's inconsistent with final plat approval. And really what we're talking about, we're talking about the infrastructure improvements to the, to the subdivision. The, the rows, the drainage, the, anything that's just infrastructure that they could have done before final plat approval, but they opted to get a bond put up, which allows them to move forward. And if something goes wrong, if they don't complete it, then the county can call on the bond and complete the infrastructure improvements. That's the protection, that's the safeguard that the ordinance puts in place. They have not done anything that's inconsistent with that. They haven't sold lots, they haven't bailed out those lots, has not been recorded, so the status quo has been maintained since August. And if it pleases the Board with the bond in front of you, you can certainly approve that as to surety and as to the length of time, and then community development will move forward with finalizing the final plat.
Mr. Chairman, I made the original motion to approve this final plat contingent on the bond, and so I'll make the motion to approve the application FP 4754 and acceptance of a performance bond in the amount of $1,362,144. Bond number CICI 921042 from Capital Indemnity Corporation for a period not to exceed two years from the date of final approval by the Board of Commissioners. The remaining improvements shall be completed within two years unless an extension is approved.
Mr. Chairman, there was an updated motion in that second update that County Clerk gave to you.
Why didn't you stop me before I got on?
If we can get that motion, uh, may in second.
This, this, this the one that, okay, sorry, we got.
So if you could rescind that motion, Commissioner Brunson, and then just make the new motion, please.
Yeah, okay, motion is rescinded.
Could you say that a little bit louder, please? Say, "Motion is rescinded."
Motion is rescinded.
Thank you.
All right. Next page. I move that Board of Commissioners accept and approve the performance bond in the amount of $1,362,144. Bond number CICI 921042 from Capital Indemnity Corporation as security and 50 Oaks Group LLC as principal in connection with final plat application FP 4754 for 50 Oaks subdivision where the required improvements to be completed within one year of March 15th, 2022.
Second. Commiss, um, Counselor, was that correct? I mean, what, the motion stands, is that correct? The agenda item must have been set incorrectly according to Mr. Kilgore.
The, the motion stands. The motion is what you're, you're voting on.
The amount of the bond is $1,362,144, is that correct?
Correct.
Is there any commissioners, we're all clear on that? All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Brunson, we have a second by Commissioner Folsky. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes six in favor, one recusal. Mr. Attorney, County Attorney, we have executive session.
We do, Mr. Chairman. We have property acquisition, personnel, and potential litigation, please.
All right, do I have a motion go into executive session for property, personnel, and potential ex-
Mr. Chair, motion to go into executive session for property acquisition, personnel, and possible litigation.
Second. Got a motion to go into executive session, a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes 7-0, we adjourn until the executive session's over. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board of Commissioners approve the executive session minutes for March 3, 2022 executive session.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion by Commissioner Raffalsky is second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes unanimously, 7-0.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the county attorney's recommendations regarding property acquisition.
We have a motion by Commissioner Raffalsky is second by Commissioner Booker and Commissioner Tostenson. All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 7-0.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board of Commissioners approve the chief financial officer's employment agreement with Tamara Munson as presented.
A motion by Commissioner Raffalsky is second by Commissioner Neal and Commissioner Booker. All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 7-0.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board of Commissioners approve the First Amendment to the County Attorney Employment Agreement with Aaron Mumford as presented.
A motion by Commissioner Raffalsky is second by Commissioner Neal and Commissioner Booker. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn by Commissioner Neal, second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, raise your right hand. Meeting is adjourned.